On October fourth, two thousand twenty-four. We have met compliance with official notification. Roll call, please. Rook Taylor. I think Schumacher here, Sarah Cooper Mccone.
Yeah.
Ed Gallagher.
Here.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Flor Gavsky.
Yeah.
President Stephen Olson. Here. This time, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which stands our nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment signup sheet. By the entrance prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. And did we have anybody sign up to speak this evening?
No.
Okay. Next then is disposition of minutes from September nine, two thousand twenty-four. We'll need a motion to.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Motion to second to approve the minutes from September nine, two thousand twenty-four. There any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's motion carries. When I report from the superintendent last Monday evening at the committee of the whole on October seventh. Principal Kim O'Donnell gave a Four Corners Elementary School update. There is a link that you can click on to see her report. Do you want to take the new ones, or do you want me to read them?
You can.
Okay, I'll do. Um, new informational items, Superior High School updates, student representative, and we certainly welcome you here tonight, Taylor McMeacon.
Welcome, Taylor.
Thanks for being here.
Got a speech prepared?
Yes, she does. Right, you're up. Yeah, you can start. Okay, um, I'll start off with homecoming we had that we had two weeks ago. Um, this year we had a new parade route, um, which we thought went very well. Our student council advisors having a meeting with the city in a couple of weeks, I think, to talk about it. And we'll see about for next year where the route will be. Um, we had the most floats that we've had since before COVID, so that was good. Um, we heard a lot of good things about the assembly, um, from teachers. They said it was the most energetic and smooth assembly that they've seen in a while. Um, we had two, two weeks of homecoming this year, kind of, because we started dress up days a week earlier and saw a lot of participations. That was good. We had Powder Buff, our men's volleyball tournament, and Powder Puff, our ladies football, and those both went very well.
Who won?
The seniors. Um, yeah, Powder Puff had really good sportsmanship this year, which was kind of the best that we've seen in a while. So that was good. Um. A little look into the future. We're currently in the process of planning a bright night for the end of October. Um, we'll have like a haunted hallway and Halloween movie and pumpkin decorating partnering with Deca. Um, Ball Ball is October nineteenth, held at UWS. And then our kind of goal for student council this year is to host an event on the first Wednesday of every month. Um, that's just kind of a goal.
Like after school?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So like this, um, month was our Powder Buff.
Okay.
And then so we have a couple of ideas for that. We'll see how well it goes. Um, kind of like a school-wide thing, the phone policy. Um, teachers do report fewer problems with the cell phone use. Um, students are obviously still getting used to it. And they obviously don't really love it, but, um, they liked having the opportunity to have it at lunch last year and upset that that changed this year, but otherwise I think it's going pretty good getting used to it.
All right. I know something to talk about with the parade route too is this year being there. I know the middle school couldn't attend, so that's something to consider when you guys are discussing that, so. Yeah. But you had, uh, Northern Lights and I think Great Lakes.
Yeah. Yeah, a good elementary turnout.
That's good.
And Brian.
Brian even. Oh, yeah, they brought a bus. Yep, yep, yep.
Right, so, yeah, so we'll see how that one goes.
And I accidentally came across everything being livestreamed. I was actually looking for a passport meeting, but I came across the livestream. All the homecoming, the gym, and the Powder Puff football stuff.
Did that, the high schooler? Did you do that? Oh, you did that. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. All done.
It was nice to see more people.
Yeah, that was a need from the Four Corners thing. Want to still participate somebody, so I worked with Ella to get that up and running and they were able to show up to some of the classes.
Oh, that's great.
Feels like a good start to the school year.
Yeah.
Yes, it does. All right, thanks for coming.
Thanks, Taylor. Uh, also another new item, uh, the Scott Anderson Leadership Foundation freshman orientation updates from, are we gonna have them from?
Yes, so.
Emily Daniel and Caitlin?
So we're still, we still want to get kids in our board and sharing some of the updates and I had said to, um, Miss Sigfris, are you kind of helping with this? You guys can come on up if you want, or, um, I thought this would be a nice thing to give the up, the board an update that our students participate in this each year. So thanks for being here, you guys.
Thank you.
We'd love to hear a little bit about what this experience is and, um, yeah.
We brought two of our finalists to speak with you tonight in addition to Taylor. This is Emily and this is Caitlin, and they're gonna talk about two opportunities they both were involved in over the summer and that started this year.
Right.
So I'm gonna be speaking about the Scott Anderson Leadership Forum, um, which is called SALT. So it was a week-long leadership training that was held at the College of St. Scholastica. It was, um, I'm pretty sure the first week we got out of school this summer. Um, and it was all different schools from around the area. We had a lot of Duluth schools, I believe, the University of Wisconsin School.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it was open to incoming juniors and seniors. We had to get nominated from an SHS staff, and then there was an application process we had to go through, so um, only a certain amount of students were accepted, and we had fifteen SHS students that were there in attendance. Um, so it's Scott Anderson, it's his, um, foundation, that's it. It's his foundation. He was a outdoor adventurer, as it says up there. He was just a really big person in the community, but he sadly passed away flying, or test flying a plane for Sears Aircraft. Um, and his family started a foundation in his memory, and they used it to build this, um, whole thing. I know that they do some other things, but SALT is like their big thing. Um, and it was really cool getting to learn his story. We met his parents on the first day. They came in and spoke to us, kind of gave their experience living with him, so we didn't have to just like read off of a PowerPoint. They actually came and talked to us about him and about him. Um, and so we got to meet a lot of new students. They divided us into different groups. Um, there you can see, I believe that top picture's from the first day and then the bottom picture's from a few days later. So we kind of got to connect with the community, um, and the different groups, uh, only one to two students per school were in that group. So it would be you with all other kids that you've never met before, ideally. And so up here is the group of Allison. And in the picture in the left, we were volunteering at Second Harvest Food Bank. On one of the days, we dedicated about half a day just to volunteering in different local communities, and I think we got a lot out of that and it was a really great experience overall. So this is my group. Uh, we got sent to Hartley Nature Center. Um, and we spent, I believe it was four hours hauling sand and rocks. Um, because they have a lot of washed out trails, and so they needed the trails rebuilt. And he said that it was a project that would have taken him along two weeks, that we got done four hours. Um, and it was a really great experience. So that is, you'll see I'm wearing the T-shirt, um, they had given us all to do our community service in. Um, and then that bottom picture off to the side where we're all in blindfolds was a really fun thing we got to do for some team building. I believe it was before we went to do our community service projects together. Um, and so I wasn't allowed to use my arms, I believe, so somebody had to guide me and I had a blindfold on. It was crazy. I think I had to sign a piece of paper with a marker in my mouth. It was an interesting experience. Well, it was really fun. Um, in regards to my group, I'm still friends with a lot of them. We still talk in our group chat. And I think that I built some really close relationships with some students from over the bridge that I don't think I would have gotten to know without this. Um, some highlights is that every day we heard from inspirational speakers. Um, I learned about a lot of people's life experiences, which is pretty crazy. I heard some, from some really great speakers. Um, and a lot of them are like interactive. We got to hear from the Duluth mayor. Um, down on the bottom, laughed, that is one of our other students from SHS that went. Uh, but yeah, I think we had, the max we had is four speakers in one day, four or five. Um, but they had at least two every day, which is really cool. So there's a group of SHS students. Um, on day four, we had our school administrators come in and talk to us. Um, they kind of wanted to speak to us about what we learned, what we can take back to SHS. I think we talked to them for a good amount of time. We came up with a lot of really good ideas that we've already started implementing into school. So that was really cool, um, to be able to put what we learned somewhere, especially right away, because if I would have done this and came back in September and then told my school, like, this is what's going on, I think I would have, it would have been a little bit more difficult, but being able to bring our school administrators there and kind of just show them this is what we've been doing. And this is what we did in the last few days. It was really, really nice to be able to put my work and explain it to somebody.
Can you give an example of one thing you implemented?
Um, we learned that we could put like this leadership skills into, um, what we started this year, which is the next thing we're gonna talk about, which is ninth grade orientation.
Okay.
Um, me specifically, when I was working with my students, um, I did some really cool like team building exercises with my ninth graders, um, which they ended up enjoying. They were interested in them holding hands, and that was a little too much for them. But I had a lot of fun and I really enjoyed being able to like actually feel like I was doing a lot because I knew what was more impactful. I knew that working with them hands-on would be more impactful than giving them a worksheet and saying, okay, this is what we have to do today. Um, the key takeaways from this was we learned to follow our own morals and stay true to what we believe in. That was a big thing that, uh, our speakers emphasized, staying true to what you want, even if it's not what's surrounding you. Um, which I didn't really expect going into this. I kind of feel like I left a completely different person because they talked about a lot of things that I didn't expect them to get into. Um, one day we talked about our hardest challenges with our group, which is not something I would have ever expected to get into with a ton of kids I'd only met three days earlier. But it was really good. Um, I had learned a lot about myself at this place. Um, but we also learned how to commute, communicate with other groups of people, which was really important day one when I hadn't known these people for two minutes and they already had me on a little line, um, trying to get us around. And we recognize our skills in surrounding leadership and how we make it even stronger, which was also really important when it came to ninth grade leadership this year.
So how we applied what we learned, we had asked ourselves the question, what is Superior High School missing? And so we understand that the transition from middle school to high school can be difficult for a lot of SMES students, especially because they don't guess they could start like, um, they do in the middle school as opposed to the high school. And so, um, we wanted to pick our skills from Scott Anderson and apply them with freshman orientation. And so for this day, we had all ninth grade students attend a special day for freshman orientation on August twenty-second. And there were twenty-four junior, senior students that served as mentors. And we all got these shirts and they were so that all of them were, um, yeah. And all of the freshmen, as well, got T-shirts just about freshman orientation and it helped us know like who's who and who you can go to for help. And so everyone got a half-day training prior to that, so we knew what we wanted to talk about with all the freshmen. And mentors were responsible for bringing their small group of ninth graders. And so right there is what I explained, we got them all T-shirts passed out. And all of the groups were divided into those small groups of twenty people or less. And those groups are also gonna be their advisory throughout high school. So they'll be with those kids every day for thirty minutes in class, and that'll be leading up to their senior year. And so before we split everyone into their groups, Mr. Fessy gave a speech welcoming all the freshmen, just introducing them to the high school and what they're gonna be experiencing as freshmen. And then each group got a tour of SHS and the mentors explained all the areas, like attendance, buses, where you leave, stuff like that, just all the basics you need to know to get through high school. And then like Emily was talking about, we did a lot of small group activities, like icebreakers, just so everyone could get to know each other because obviously these kids are gonna be with each other throughout their senior years, so we want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with each other.
I might have just missed it. Thought we did. You say you stayed with the ninth graders throughout, or you teach them?
Advisory group, so they're gonna be with them throughout ninth grade until twelfth grade and advisory period. Where basically we just kind of learn different things about school, like school rules.
Um, we gave them, yeah, we gave them a tour. We kind of talked about what to expect. Um, we'll also be checking in with these groups every month for the rest of the school year, which is really cool. Um, so they met us before their school year started, and now we'll be checking in, asking how grades are, doing different activities with them, kind of gauging how they've been doing. Um, just kind of asking, do they need tutoring help? If they have any questions, um, we had a meeting today about our next meeting with them because we haven't spoken to them much since. But I know one thing that we're hoping to go over is like standards-based grading, what to expect now that the first quarter's coming to an end. Um, because now, once this next quarter starts, they'll be able to see their letter grade. So just kind of keeping it in mind that they should be really gauging where they're at. Um, and that is a little different than the middle school, um, when it comes to that. But we're also gonna be just like asking how it's been going, what we can do to change. Um, I know another thing we're gonna talk about is there anything that they didn't feel prepared for that we probably could go over for next year's ninth graders, because this is so new. Um, we're just kind of gauging what went well, what didn't, and what we can do to improve it because we had a pretty good turnout, but now that we have done one, we're hoping that we get an even better turnout next year.
Wow, this is fantastic. Awesome job, really. Did you guys know about the leadership opportunities that our kids have in the summer? Is that new information?
Just that?
Okay, yeah, I figured.
I was gonna ask either for you guys or Mr. Fessy or Mrs. Sigfris, um, what, what do you guys, what are the staff looking for as far as nominating you to these positions?
It was offered to all the SALT kids after we had talked to them about what we had done and leadership stuff that we had gone through. Um, so I, a good chunk of the people that were there were in SALT, but also it was offered to student council kids.
Okay.
So it was a mix of SALT and student council people that were there.
And for SALT, you had to do an application after you were nominated to get into SALT.
What kinds of things were they looking for in that application?
Um, a lot of questions like, why do you want to be there? Like, what makes it important to you?
Excellent job.
Yes, thank you.
Proud of what you've done.
It'd be great to get an update like towards the end of the year to see like what feedback you guys are getting, you know, challenges or
What you're planning for next?
Are going well and what we are planning for next year. That'd be awesome.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you guys.
Juniors? And like, you're seeing, you're seeing, okay, so you won't be good feedback, okay.
Do juniors automatically stay in next year?
I don't know. Um, that's Mr. Anderson and Miss Noll, it's kind of keeping track of those kids. Um, I think that they're looking for most of the same kids, but I, I'm not sure. I think that'd be a good thing.
It's nice because it's a rollover. We've been involved in the program.
Yes, because they're the ones that gave the most feedback today in the meeting. Um, they kind of focused in on the juniors, asking them what they thought. Um, looking for their opinions on changing next year because they would be able to put that into next year. So my guess is yes.
It's a program that we've been involved in since its inception. Um, so twenty-some years now. Originally, it was Rory Johnson who was at Superior Cathedral here as a FIAD teacher who helped run it, but active all the time with all of us, had Superior students in it, so very proud of what you're doing.
Thank you for coming, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you, Taylor.
And, and the leadership opportunities for kids. Ella, we've got our sportsmanship, leadership, we're coming here, the WIA.
Yep, in a couple of weeks. Took the group to Virginia, Minnesota last week for another leadership opportunity and kids are engaged, they do really great things. Um, but yeah, the CISA, CISA group is gonna be here on November
Fourteenth. It's a lot of opportunities for our students in our district. Next, our middle school principal, Mr. Aaron Lebers.
Thank you for recognizing a problem and fixing it.
She's a goner. Good afternoon, everybody. So good to see you all. Uh, they let me do this today instead of last week. So I'm gonna jump in and I'm showing what's been going on at the middle school this, uh, the twenty-fourth school year.
Maybe.
Maybe not. I'm in my audience today, so I have to start with this. This is those half-full days kicking off, uh, with all of our staff and we took gold medal in the, uh, in the tug-of-war.
Really are doing that, really? There's a lot of controversy around this. I know.
Constant cheating.
Oh, yes. There's no video for that. Oh, there is actually. Uh, Aaron Fessy has it for you. He's like a super tape. Yeah.
Is there steroids involved? So you can see why I put this in. Our staff, it was a really great kickoff to the school year. Um, so some celebrations, you know, that's a great place to work and learn, but, uh, attendance is up. Our, our scores and fast breaks and floor exam are improving. Um, Stafford can continue to work to create that positive learning environment, right? So we've been working really hard these last couple of years on, on these big items. Um, we talked about this last year, our attendance was kind of in a dismal state and, and, uh, proud to say that we improved it by ten points last year. And I included a picture in here, I think it's one of the, one of the many reasons why things are improving attendance-wise. This is, uh, uh, one of our cross-country groups, uh, from our intermural programs, so that just kicked off again this year. Um, we, we've had over a third of our students participate in after-school intermurals last year, and it's only gonna get bigger um, this year. So we've already seen happens of that with our few intermurals that we started at the beginning of the school year. So we're really intentional about creating a, a place where kids want to be and our staff want to be, and, and this is one of those things I'm really proud of. Got a lot of can, uh, dedicated staff that are really making this thing possible, so kind of a cool thing. Um, and then our this is, this is one of the assemblies from last year, um, or this year, sorry. It's just another opportunity for kids to come together. We celebrate some positive things with our students, uh, student bodies, so they get to play some games and the crowd goes wild. They get, they get a lot of encouragement to compete in some of these games. They've got some sort of contraption on their head and have to knock over those water bottles, but it's just a lot of fun and just recognizing the good things that are going on in our school. Uh, some of our challenges are our math literacy scores are lower than what we want them to be. Um, some of the things that we've put into place to address that, we have intervention teachers in our, in, for math and ELA, and we started off interventions right away at the beginning of the school year. We use the data from last year. We got kids, uh, starting with that first week of school, so our Spartan Start really provides us that opportunity to, to dive in and, and, and help support students in those areas. And so we'll rotate students through every six to twelve weeks in those interventions, um, during Spartan Start if they need it. So that's a really really positive thing that we started in the middle of last year and we really wanted to kick off the beginning of the school year. Our CIP team met this August and, uh, our goal for this year is to increase the number of students, making modest, typical, or aggressive growth on fast-paced GLA exam. Um, our goal last year was eighty-three percent, and we wanted to increase it to a hundred percent. So we want to see, and I'll show a little bit of a graph here next, we want to just see really our kids growing for whatever category that they're in. We want to see them growing into the next category, so this is kind of like a breakdown of our, our growth in fall of spring last year. So eighty-four percent of our kids you know, showed some improvement, but the the far-left category is at sixteen percent that didn't show any growth. So we want to, we want to improve that to a hundred percent, so make sure that our kids are moving towards the right from red to purple. So that's kind of a, just a visual representation of what we're trying to achieve, and that's our benchmark, our fast bridge and assessments. We'll do that fall, winter, and spring. So we'll see some growth through that moving year. Some of the action steps that we put in place to help support that goal. Um, we're checking in with our PLCs each week. Uh, their, their agendas are updated and they're using data at the, at their meetings to, um, demonstrate what the students learn and what they still need to work on. Uh, we've been talking about grading practices. We've created some common expectations. We're gonna talk a little bit more about that later, but um, communicating with our families to demonstrate the growth that our students are seeing, right? And updating those, uh, comments and grades in Power School. Um, ongoing literacy strategies, so that's also another thing that happens during Spartan Start. Uh, we have monthly training in place for our staff to the, uh, so that they can deliver that strategy each month of the school year. And we've, we've got some things in place to help the classroom environment, PBIS, BAR, and restorative practices. And, um, we're really wanting to, um, support those classroom environments. Uh, so we've got deans and assistant principals who are willing to go in and and help out, uh, our teachers, and if they need to have a restorative conversation with the students, that's probably in the classroom. One of, a dean or a AP or myself even will, or one of our coaches will go in watch that classroom so that teacher can have, do some problem solving with the students, so. Some of the things that are going on at the middle school. Uh, here's an example of PBIS tours at the beginning of the school year. That's that you heard a little bit from the seniors just a minute ago about staggered starts is one of the things that we are able to do with our seventh and eighth graders on, on one day and our sixth graders get the buildings themselves on the second day and get the tourists throughout the building, and this is what they're, they're learning about work respect along with the library. And then, of course, uh, day one of the school year, we had a wonderful visitor this year, and that was pretty cool. And our, our student reps, student leaders did a great job of providing a tour to the, to the governor first day of school, kind of last-minute, uh, opportunity, but it was
That's how it works. In two days, okay, all ready.
It worked out pretty, pretty slick. They did, they did a fantastic job. And brand-new advent team. Uh, Marion B. retired last year. Gary and Katie got jobs over in Duluth and, uh, and I'm, I'm really, in June, I was a little worried, stressed.
We got it, we got it, yeah.
Well, we hired, uh, three new assistant principals this year. Shannon on the left, Sam in the middle, and John. And, uh, John was, uh, previously a dean. Sam, of course, did a lot of work at, uh, Great Lakes FIAD teacher. Shannon's coming new to us, so, um, but they are doing a wonderful job and
Lots of positive feedback from not only the teachers, but the parents too, so it's really
Be, I couldn't be happier, so
They're great.
That stress went away pretty quickly and, uh, we're, we're doing really well. So there's your SMS update. Any questions?
Said before, but the intermural thing I think is great for kids to have something extra to connect with different kids outside of just the learning hours and I seen it last year, I think it was very beneficial, and so I hope it continues to grow, and there's plenty more intermural stuff with kids this year.
It creates good connections for kids, so it, it's more than just the intermural. It's about the relationships and having fun and there's something for almost everybody. I mean, really, you have a lot of choices. Yeah, throughout the year.
We have a huge variety, and it's just athletics.
Absolutely.
There's a variety of things that kids can do and one of the things that, that's awkward at age, they need something else to do
Yeah.
after school. Many of our students don't have something to go do next and, uh, if they're, if they're out in, out in the community, they, they need a, they need a supervised fun activity between the hours of three-thirty and five o'clock, in my opinion, and, and this is providing some.
David, as a reminder, um, we're not necessarily, um, incurring costs for intermurals through our content, correct?
Um, well, we're still kind of hitting it, but
A little bit.
Transfer over. Um, the big thing is, in fact, the year last year, we set it up, we're operating this to not only our students, but Cathedral and here and out the kids and any homeschool kids. That way it falls under a front eighty expense, uh, which means it doesn't come out of general, it's also the revenue, so.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, I continue to hear great things about the behavior, the environment. It's been
Continue to hear great things about the behavior, the environment. It's been, it seems to improve.
Every year.
It's great. So awesome job by the staff.
They work so hard. They work so hard.
Positive plug for some recess time for these. I know that's been really helpful.
They do have recess. Yeah, they do have recess. They buy their ground though.
I know.
Do we need, we do need to maybe put some energy around some fundraising or something around it.
Fresh air and just getting
Use the term loosely. Outside time after lunch.
Yeah, you go.
Yeah, it'd be nice to go into a contained kind of space where they can do some
Sure.
Fucking loft or the
Yeah.
Yeah. But they, they need it.
They do. It's the, when the governor was here, he said, what can I help you with? And one kid said, we need, we need a playground. And I was like, yeah, then we kind of hear that. Yeah.
Yeah, need a space.
Yeah.
Playground, I'll leave you alone. Continued.
Yeah.
It's good. And they get 10 or 15 minutes inside and
Yeah, they do.
Serious energy on this. This is one way. The hallway after lunch is really nice. Coming back a little more calm, that's a good.
Yep.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Action items on the word from our superintendent. Approval of Phase One Strategic Planning Recommendations, the Mission Vision Commitments, and the District Pillars.
Motion to approve.
Motion, the second to approve Phase One for Mission Vision Commitments and our District Pillars. Is there any further discussion?
Just a reminder, we're going to have our Phase Two Conversation on Wednesday. So I'm looking forward to what that will bring. That will, will create goals and objectives around how we want to reach our district vision.
That will come back to
And then we'll bring that back in
November then.
November. We'll bring that back in November. Yeah.
Right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. There were no discussion items. We'll move on to the Board Committee Reports. The Operations Committee, no action items, no discussion items. Informational items at the committee of the whole on October 7. Director of Food Service, Jamie Wilson, provided department updates. And you can click on that link to see what those are all about.
Motion to accept Operations Committee.
Second, motion, the second to accept the Operations Committee Report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Teaching and learning, no action items, no discussion items, no informational items.
Yeah. Yes, there is.
Until you turn the page. All right. New secondary grading update. SSH teacher, Andy Wool, SMS teacher, Dan Whitaker. SHS Principal Aaron Fezzi, Principal Aaron Liebers, Technology Support Specialist Casey Smith have an update for us on secondary grading.
You guys want to come up? Let me, can I tee it up just a little bit? Does that sound okay? So I can share this with the board in our weekly update, but what they're going to talk through tonight, we have high school, middle school. And Casey will kind of share our district perspective. We put together some new kind of guidelines this summer. And so they're going to kind of cover those guidelines, what was established last June through really now and kind of what we've been working on. That sound fair?
Sounds great.
Okay, so you're up.
We started early and it was June 11th, actually, and a shared leadership team from the middle school and the shared leadership team from the high school got together and Amy and Crystal and Kate were all there. And we really put a lot of energy into figuring out what were some of the biggest issues that we just really needed to address. It was boiled down to four, and those were communication, especially with parents and families, formative work, cognitive work, motivation, reassessment, and then grading calculation. So got to work and met again on August 1st. And this time we invited not just our shared leadership teams, but people from outside of the other teachers as well. Some of the department heads and some other teachers came to that as well. So we threw the net as wide as we could, got as many people into that discussion as possible. What we're doing now in regards to those issues is we are, I think if I had to like make one main point, it would be that we're trying to use Power School as the main communication tool with our families. If I had to boil it down to the most important thing, I would probably say that's our main initiative that we're trying to do with this. But here are some specifics. One, the grading calculation. We now have two classes. So a teacher or a PLC, if you're working with other teachers, you had to have an agreement on this. You couldn't go over and do your own thing. But you could either choose to do an averaging to a mean, or you could take the highest. What I specifically might mean by that is if you have a standard and you have more than one summative assessment. Right? Where now, it used to be just the highest, whatever the highest score that a student had, that became their score for that standard at the end of the semester. And then it's averaged in with their other standard scores. Now we have these two options. That's based on the fact that some, some teachers are saying, look, it, sometimes when I give a summative, it's on really different content. And so we could see why they would do that. I'll just, as an example, as writing teacher in a journalism class, if I'm having students use this writing standard, and I only have one on a sports writing piece that looks really different than when they go to do a news writing piece or an entertainment piece or something like that. And so some teachers are using that mean and some teachers are staying with the highest. It does have to be communicated out, which we'll talk about that in just a second. So this is another thing that we really doubled down on. We actually added this as something that we're doing, which is every class now has a class description given on Power School. So any parent can see it. And we've asked that everybody put in your syllabus or some sort of a classical course description. And you also have in there what your grading calculation method is that you're using. And we also ask that you put in there for parents to know what other kinds of feedback are kids getting and where else might be getting that. Because of course, kids are not going to see all the feedback that goes with a kid in Power Schools. That's absolutely impossible. So that's there. The other thing that we're doing is we are, we're making sure that we use what's called a common formative assessment. We call it a CFA, but it's a common formative assessment. So there's three teachers teaching a class, right? They are all in agreement that there will be this formative assessment that looks something similar to the test or final or summative assessment. It comes out, they give it in the class, and then we put that in Power School. That comes with feedback. It either shows you where you've arrived on the proficiency scale and whether it be a one, a two, a three, a four, or there may be a comment in there showing maybe what learning target within the proficiency scale that student needs to work on. We're doing one or other, one of the other or both. So and then the last thing I guess I'll mention about the grading is that there are some, some teachers that just by the design of their classes and the design of their curriculum, you could see anything that's really project based and big projects like an art class, things like that, where it can be difficult maybe to have a line that is summative by the first progress report eight weeks in. So what we're doing now is we are saying, all right, we get this, all right? And what we're going to do is if we can't provide a summative, we're going to provide some description of where this class is at. So that parents will see that. Here are standards that are being taught at this moment. And here's when you will see the summative coming. So that will be now on the proxy board. So the only other thing I wanted to mention, and it's not directly related to grading, but something I'm just really proud of what we're doing. Last year, we spent a lot of time because motivation is constant at concern. You hear people say things in regards to, well, it's hard to get kids to do all the work that's not being graded. We're looking at all kinds of ways to get kids engaged. If kids are engaged, they'll do it. And so we started this work last year and we're continuing it this year. And we're trying to get we're trying, all of us, to just make three commitments. One of them is to make sure that we have thinking tasks, tasks that actually require kids to do hard thinking, critical thinking. We're also trying to find ways to keep kids in that productive struggle. We're using a number of strategies to do that. And we're, this is across the whole building. We're trying to get kids in every class as much as possible to be involved in collaboration and discussion. Again, I know that's not directly related to grading, but I actually do think it's all related, to be honest.
And this is all just at the high school level that you're Why don't we give a middle school and a district update? And then why don't we take questions? Because there might be some things that pertain to all, does that sound okay? Does that feel okay? All right.
Some of what I'll say probably sounds a little bit like what Andy was talking about. We're in the same meeting, same groups with SLT and grading group. We were focusing a little bit more maybe toward the communication piece for middle school. A lot of times between us and home, that's where some of the pieces fall apart a little bit. So we, we broke it down with the idea that we're strengthening that positive learning environment and relationship home. One item is that we're using comments and, and/or the scores in Power School to share with families how students are doing on formative and summative assessments. Looking at communicating home every week. We have a family engagement time that every teacher that has the Spartan Starts, we communicate home with what's happening, positive, negative, otherwise, you know, just letting them know what's happening. Frontloading how to use Power School. Sometimes like we have some parents that try to use the app. You get a different result in the app than you do on the website. So we tried to do some training with that, get it frontloaded out. And then ongoing, like at conferences in a couple of weeks, we'll be giving some reminders about how to use Power School. And then keeping in mind that our parents don't always have access to classroom the same way that our students do. So if, if the kid's logging in at home, they can see something different. But if they're not able to access it at home or don't have their password, whatever, that parents don't always see the stuff we have in classrooms. So we have to ensure that both of those things communicate effectively. We're focusing on making sure that we have enough formatives in Power School to justify success on our summatives. So if it be a couple of formative items or many, we make sure that there's a minimum of one formative, common formative assessment, like you heard Andy talking before each summative. And then there's also a comment that goes in with that one, providing some feedback before we hit our summative piece. We look for at least one summative per quarter to show progress and understanding of whatever standards are being taught that quarter and comments to go along with that. Any ease should only be happening if there's absolutely nothing that we can draw evidence from. If there is any engagement, formative work, we can use that to supplement in. We do kind of a blended, you know, using multiple sources in order to give some type of, of credit for the formative work. And if they don't have completed work, again, back to that family engagement time, we're making the weekly calls and contacts on that. And then within our PLCs, we're making sure that we have the exact same formative and summative items in Power School. So if you looked at my Power School, you would see the exact same items that you would see in the other two science teachers for my PLC. And then we also at our PLC meetings, we spend a lot of time calibrating how we're scoring so that one teacher isn't seeing things from one perspective and another one is giving threes when somebody else would give twos. So we spend time creating those assignments, descriptions, the assessments, all of that together, so that we ensure consistency there. And then if we do have a standard that's being graded multiple times, we clarify to families how that's being addressed differently. We heard Andy kind of talking about the same thing, so that that is in our syllabus or email or however, we're communicating that one out. And then from the Spartan grade perspective, which is a little different than the high school, we update those consistently through the quarter. We start everybody out at a proficiency, work respect long, stand Spartan grade. And then if it drops from that three, we make a communication home. The first one might be email, just saying, you know, here are some things that we are observing that's causing some disruption or lack of work progress, et cetera. And then if it, if it goes beyond that, then it's definitely making a phone contact. So we're not relying on an email being read. And then we have our Spartan grade proficiency table and instructions on that that we've revised to make sure that everybody's consistent with those.
Your email you sent out to families today was really, really nice and really was helpful trying to figure out where the formative feedback was. And so that was a really nice job.
And that's, we, for science, we just completed our first summative assessment. So I sent out a breakdown of here are the scaffolding formative pieces.
Here's how you go onto Power School and find where the information is. That was helpful. Because sometimes folks put it in different places. Yeah. It was really good.
That's what we're looking at at those.
All right. How about Casey? Want to come up or are you kind of locked in back there? So one of the biggest things that came up is we were working in June, were so many questions from teachers across both the middle school and the high school regarding Power School, how we were entering grades, how we were using feedback features, but also how families were able to access this information. And so Casey's been a huge champion when it comes to trying to figure that out, not only helping teachers, but getting information out to families. So I'll let you give that update.
Perfect. We kind of gave ourselves three district-wide goals. One of them was providing ongoing training for our teachers. So we checked out the school year. I spent the afternoon at the high school. We went through a slideshow. I made sure everybody had a refresher on how to use Power School. We showed some tips and tricks. Andy worked closely with me, giving, you know, staff some more some other tips.
Is it safe to say that you and Andy and Casey, you guys kind of work together? So when Casey's not there, you're able to provide some of that level of support too to teachers ongoing?
Yeah.
Is that safe to say?
Yeah. And so we took that slideshow, we sent it out to staff. And so it's kind of like a all-in-one how-to document also, the slideshow was. And we shared that with the middle school also. So all teaching staff has the same consistent directions and tips. One of the other things that we're doing weekly, I'm meeting with the coach attendants at both the middle and high school, and we're doing grade book checks. And I have such a great partnership with the coaches, who we see the issues in the grade book and we go and talk to the teachers right away to make sure that families don't see those little issues or something, like sometimes the standard's forgotten to be added or maybe they forgot to add feedback. So we work together really closely to make sure that the teachers are getting the support that they need. Another one of our goals is to improve parent training and education regarding Power School. One of the things we did at the start of the year is both the middle and high school, we created a brochure that was some basic information about Power School, how to get set up, how to use the website and the app. We keep pushing out that the app, ditch the app. And the message is getting out there. So I have 93.5% of SHS students' records have been accessed via the web portal versus only 69% via the app. And at the middle school, 89.6% of students were accessed on the web and only 45 through the app. So I think we're continuing to push out that message that, you know, the app is awesome for like attendance, like where were you fifth hour? But for grading and for all that feedback that the teachers are putting in Power School, we really want families to use the Power School web version.
Casey, for the brochure, are we going to have that information out at both the middle and the high school for conferences too?
Well, at the middle school and high schools for conferences, we're going to have something better than a brochure.
Sorry.
We're going to have
I thought we were going to do both, but okay.
We're going to offer some device advice sessions. So one-on-one training if parents have, you know, issues getting onto Power School or trying to figure out where to find that information.
Does that look like, like, like will there be a station set up or what will that look like?
Sure. We'll have a sale.
Okay.
We'll have to wait and see.
Okay, okay. It's going to be confetti. Yeah.
I obviously can't be everywhere. So Andy's already volunteered and produced at the middle school. So we're going to figure out how that will look, but we're going to make sure that everybody knows.
Okay, okay.
The other thing that we've been doing is every, every time your school newsletter comes out, I have information about Power School in there. So this week you'll get feedback in Power School, like where to find it, where there's like three different places that you could see feedback. And here's how you find it. We've updated the website. I've added a few more graphics so families can find information, how you find, you know, your standard grades, what all those icons mean. We have a big, little What all those icons mean. We have a big little legend now of all the icons. Um, sometimes a green check mark is all you're going to see in the grade book. And that just means that your student did the work and it was churned in. Um, so I think the more that information we can push out to families, um, through newsletters, through teacher emails, uh, the better. And then the one other thing that we have on our list is improving how feedback is provided to students and families. And I think both Andy and Dan did a great job, um, already touching base on that. Um, we are, if you log on to your students' power schools, you'll see feedback in there. Um, you'll see feedback in the form of a score or a comment or both. Um, and you will be able to see if your student's on track with that standard. Um, you know, we're not perfect yet, but we keep getting better and better. And every week when we're pulling some grade book checks and we're having conversations with teachers, um, I'm pretty confident that families will continue to see that feedback and know how their students are doing before report cards and progress reports come out.
I think the biggest thing that we talked about this summer was understanding if our kids are on track, um, through the formative work, uh, prior to taking a summit. If we wanted, we want to be able to know if our child is going to be on track to get a three or as proficient. And if not, how do we help them as parents, um, support them if they're not on track? I think that's the big question.
Yep. And I, you know, we just looked at some of that data today and we, I, I, I don't think we had any grade books that had summatives without formative. So we're, we're doing great. Any questions?
Um, I'm wondering if Erin and Erin, do you guys have anything you want to add or? Erin, Erin?
Uh, no, I don't think it's bad. I think the also spoke done a really nice job of explaining it a little better than I thought.
Thanks, Casey.
Yeah.
Thing for us was to make sure that our families, you know, check in on our students and see what they're at, especially not parent towards conferences. Yeah, I think Andy and Dan address things if there's, if there's questions I can answer.
Right. Yeah.
First of all, I'll say now I understand why I'm getting so many emails from people. Got it, Tom. Um, thank you guys too, and for presenting to us. One question I have, maybe you can elaborate more. Um, talking about the common formative assessments, then I think Dan was talking about there being X amount of formative assessments with the summative per quarter. You know, okay. And so is that like, are, are you taking X amount of formative lessons and getting? An assessment sounds like a test to me or like a grade before you're moving on to a summative or can you elaborate more on that?
Yeah. So we'll, we'll break down the work like in our, our unit that we just wrapped up. We had our formative work, which is like our practice daily, weekly type of thing. Uh, and then we'll have a common formative assessment where, you know, each of us, our three teachers, uh, might present material a little bit differently, like with their own voice and, you know, that. But we use the same materials, we use all of that, but the, the CFA is designed, okay, let's check to see if I can get out all of this. As a precursor to the actual assessment that's going to be scored. So the CFA is there to see, okay, where are we at? What do we need to improve before you take your final test? If, if the equivalent, I would say is like the behind the wheel driver said, you know, you do your practice, you do your bookwork and you start working on it. Then you go out and actually get some feedback on how you're doing with it before you go land the final assessment for it. So that, that's where I would put CFAs.
You, you got a good point right there about, about a word. Say, you know, I see this word assessment as a test and so, but I would say in the teacher's shoes, um, we use that word very differently. We're assessing every day. Uh, as a coach, whenever I'm meeting with teachers, I talk about OCP, the triangulation of assessment. And it doesn't just come from the product. It also comes from your observations, definitely comes from your conversations, OCP and NP is product, right? It's all of that. So most teachers are assessing all the time to see if these kids can do these skills. They're not just waiting for the day of the time. So I think that was a good point that you just made. We sometimes see that word.
I think Dan, you hit on it, uh, pretty well. But within using CFAs, what you're doing within your professional learning community is you're doing a couple of things. You're gauging, as Dan said, Dan and I are both teaching the science course. Uh, again, my instruction may look a little bit different than Dan's, but we give this formative assessment that is common, that is the same. And we can do a couple of things. We can then have conversations at our PLC, how do your students do, how my students do? Hey, yours, your, your output, yours is looking better than mine. Let's have a conversation about what your instruction did. We may also see that whole account, neither of our instructions where we need to be, our students are not yet ready for this summative assessment. So what's that mean? And how are we going to circle back and, and again, do some reteaching or look at things, you know, and present it in a different way to ensure that our students are ready or will, you know, for that summit. What we traditionally think of as the end of unit test or project, that, that product.
So that's the data that at the PLC meetings that the teachers bring, uh, which we are, so they're taking an assess, how their, how their instructions go on.
So what does it look like if, um, you have all your formative and the CF, CFAs, and you have a summative coming? A student's not meeting that CFA requirement, how's that look for the student and the teacher? Is the teacher doing one-on-one? Are they going to a different?
Yeah, good. Okay. No, that's certainly a good question. That's part of that PLC process. But we, we might have, uh, a, a situation where we can use a small group instruction to get close to us posted up to where we're ready for. What else can you apply to control? It's universal for all three science teachers, for example. They might have to go back and reteach that and maybe pick a different method if you teach that. So it kind of depends on what data that we're getting from that CFA. Hey, that's the data that's being used to guide our question. We may see from that CFA, man, we had another weak plan for this, but my CFA is telling me my students are already there. So what, what do we do next now? You know, how do we supplement or push that instruction to a higher level? Because I'm not going to, I don't need to continue to, to, to teach this skill for another three, four class days. Because, okay, ninety percent of them got it. We're going to do this. And for those ten percent, as Erin was speaking, I might do a small group, I might do something, uh, to address and continue to support that.
So like for a specific example, so like Dan, so like what, what, what will you do this week for the kiddos that took the assessment this week? Who got like a two? What will that look like in your classroom?
I'll have a couple of different options. They, the, the main idea is that they can educate to me and they set up a conference with me. Uh, whether that's in class time for those that, you know, we have time for. Uh, I have, uh, slips that I give them so they can come down during their lunch hour if they'd rather have a one-on-one conversation. Uh, there's always before, after school and we have, we have other options for that as well. Uh, and we'll go through, you know, from their perspective, what went well on the assessment for you? Where was, you know, how do you identify the things that you struggled with? Uh, then we'll go back and look at the formative work that we did leading up to that to see if there was something that was missed in there. Whether I missed a piece of feedback for them, if they missed a part of an assignment that they didn't do. If, you know, and we'll, we'll find where the problems were. Uh, and then we'll move into either some small group conferencing where I can work with a, a small group all at one time. Individualize it and then go back and look at how we're going to reassess. If it is something that we can just do an addendum and add on to what they had already done. Or if we need to go back and present the entire assessment or part of the assessment from a different point of view. You know, and maybe the, you know, we, we did fossil records and stuff. So, you know, if they were interpreting rock layers from a diagram, but for some reason that diagram wasn't clicking for them. I have, we have different ways we could do that. So we, we find what tool in the box is needed for them to improve their, their standing. And then we also, you know, at that point, sometimes it's, if we have a student that assesses better verbally than on paper. You know, maybe it was a timing thing, if there, there's some accommodations that need to be made. So that's when we open up the whole kit and then see what we need to do and meet, meet what they need.
I think Dan illustrated a couple of really critical points there. One, there's multiple ways to assess, uh, and two, what that reassessment looks like. It doesn't, it doesn't mean you had a twenty problem math test, that you need to take another twenty problem math test. It might be the four of the five skill areas within that math test I had. And the fifth one I didn't, I didn't have. So you work with your teacher, you work through, it might be, hey, show me on a whiteboard that you can do this. Or it might be, okay, here's three problems of this. Uh, now that we've gone through this re-instruction, you've seemed to have it now. Show me, show you that you have it. So the flexibility, i- and you know, it definitely, there is, there is a time component. There is an organizational component of how you structure your class and your instructional time. But it doesn't mean, you know, grading necessarily another five page paper or fifty question test. It, it can focus in on, on those particular skills of, of what you needed to reassess.
And every once in a while it comes down to a word on the test. Have them interpret that question completely differently. And when you sit and talk about it, they go, oh, I thought I meant that. Now we see where it went though. And we can check through it and we can check out that they had the skill, they have the, you know, the success criteria mastered. It was just an interpretation issue.
Before I stop talking, I'll just say that, I mean, it sounds like you guys truly put some time into this discussion for the school year and made some good progress. And I appreciate, oh, you guys, but everybody else that had a hand in the discussion and the back and forth. I mean, we'll say there's different groups on different sides of the table here. And I mean, what I'm hearing tonight is different stuff than I've heard in the past and I appreciate that.
I think it brought some clarity, um, around the issue a little bit. Um, whether it was the old common assessments, but now the common formative assessments, whether it was checking for understanding. The fact of the matter is, teachers are in their curriculum, checking along the way. And yes, it goes to a grading of a, a standard now, but you still need to do these types of things to meet that standard. When I was coaching baseball and if I had to teach my shortstop, how to field the ball, how to step, and then how to throw. I mean, that, those were all those intricate things even in baseball that I could teach. And then I had to do the same thing in the classroom, no matter what, what I was teaching. Prior to some of this, before our PLCs and Andy, you and I have been here long enough, Crystal, Amy, you've been at this many years. The, the, the problem was, is that there, there wasn't that commonality. The three of us could be science teachers and Andy, you could be off doing one thing, you could be off doing another thing, I could be off doing another thing.
I would say as a former principal, that was a hard, that was a challenge because you'd have parents complain and it was really hard to defend when every classroom was, was all over the place. So that was a challenge as a principal.
It, it didn't take away from the richness that we had individually.
Right.
Autonomy of teaching.
Right.
A particular subject and stuff, but this brings things more together and stuff to make sure that, that we all are on the same page. And we're all looking at the same, uh, type of measurements or the smart goals of how we're assessing what our students are doing. It is practice.
And I also just want to reiterate, I mean, one of the things we heard loud and clear from our teachers this summer was we need some common expectations. But we've got to balance that with giving teachers the autonomy to do what they need to do in their classrooms and not feel micromanaged. And so it's like, we want to have some minimum expectations, but we want to give teachers and PLCs and grade level teams the opportunity to do what they need to meet the needs of their class too. So it's a balance of, of being able to do that.
Um, I guess first of all, thank you guys for all of the work that you've done and for the people that aren't here tonight. For, it seems like you guys have put in quite a bit of time and it's appreciated, I'm sure. Um, being a past teacher myself, I would imagine that for some teachers, this might feel like maybe some extra added work, maybe if it wasn't being done in the past. But overall, have you felt like there's been positive feedback, um, for these changes and for the things that are being implemented? Um, do you feel like the, there's buy-in here and that everybody's kind of getting on the same page?
Really, you know, you know, sometimes I think, you know, hearing from Andy, Andy, uh, as a coach, maybe gets, gets a more true message than, you know, the principal to say, uh, maybe Andy, you want to speak to that?
I don't know. I think this, I talked to some kids the other day that were talking about how much, uh, more clear things were and how much they were appreciating it. But yeah, the, the teachers that I work with, um, I think that they appreciate the clarity of the expectations.
Okay.
Um, and we have been really clear about that this year. And, you know, being able to, I think that's a good point too, that you just made about, we're still trying to, um, there's different kids in every room. I mean, every class is different and, and teachers have to make decisions based upon the kids in the room. You can't have so much uniformity that you're ignoring the humanity, the individuals. And so, uh, I feel like the, the response to that is, is pretty good.
Good.
Uh, that we're meeting all those needs.
How about at the middle school?
Yeah, I would probably hear quite a few of the same comments that, you know, I can speak from within our PLC. We have our six, eight science team when we sit down, uh, having the clarity on what is expected has been very helpful. Uh, it allows us to reconfigure things to what our kids need, but also to maintain that, that constant communication going out. And the feedback has been pretty good so far.
Yeah. And we've talked about it before, where SPG was kind of rolled out at really an unfortunate time. I mean, COVID hit and so that was rough for not only the teachers, but the parents and the students and everybody. So I think just getting that clarity is really important and key. And so it sounds like good stuff is happening, but thank you, thank you all.
I'm just curious, like you said that, you know, each PLC kind of chooses which way, I don't remember what Andy said as far as, so the science department, do they all? Are they all aligned like by grade or as a six through eight as far as we're going to take the average versus the high? Or how does that work?
With the middle school, it's not.
They're not doing that.
They don't, they don't convert back to a letter grade.
Okay.
So that's not, not a factor there.
Okay.
It's just that, that's a high school specific.
Okay.
And it's by con, it's by course, right?
By course.
So.
So.
If you have multiple.
Science nine.
Right.
Okay.
All has the same biology.
Okay, okay.
So not necessarily by department, but by class.
Are you seeing a preference of one over the other?
It was scientific or no?
Oh, really?
The way we did before.
Okay, okay. Okay, yeah.
Do, do you think that that'll be assessed, uh, maybe at the end of a semester or at the end of the year to see if that's been the right fit for them?
Yeah, we put it, we said it's a year, it's a year.
Okay, and then we'll revisit it. Okay.
So.
Well, that was one of the things we said, that if you were going to make the change, you had to make the change because you couldn't change mid-course and change the expectations for kids if it's in the syllabus, so.
I think about the need there, I've encountered a lot of appreciation, not just for the clarity of this, but the support that we are giving these teachers. So, um, the, the formative role of new coaches that have our, um, we don't just say, hey, this is how you do it. We go and we help. Um, we sit down with teachers, we, uh, help them through the power school issues. Uh, we do it together, we give them the support, we don't just help.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of appreciation.
Yeah. And for, for me, I want to echo, you know, the, the appreciation, cause it, you know, from a parent's perspective, the communication like gets overwhelming at some points. For sure, getting all the emails, but like when you have time to sit down and read them, like if I have questions, it's like, oh, the answer's right there. You know, I can actually go through and find it if I, if I slid on and read it. Um, having conversations with my son, you know, he's a junior now, um, it's a lot clearer for him too. He loves that. Um, so, uh, I have an appreciation for that and, uh, you know, for, for Andy. I remember sitting in your class and I don't know if you remember me or not, but unforgettable. I get that. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not surprised. I appreciate what you said about the engagement part of it with the students. Um, it's so important. Um, and you, you did, you always did a great job of that. I remember those, uh, those days in your room. So especially Pink Floyd. Thank Floyd discussions.
Okay, I do not remember this, this classroom.
I know.
I mean, told him, he was the first teacher at the high school that showed up and all his walls were nothing but records.
Yeah.
It's still similar.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so very much for being here. You really don't have to stay for the rest.
Thank you, Casey.
Yes, Casey.
A lot of work you do.
I don't work.
Uh, the other item, um, informational item, committee of the whole on October seventh, K test. Director of continuous improvement assessment, provided updates on the fall benchmark assessments and our September thirtieth staff development date.
Most of the staff teaching learning committee, everybody?
Motion to second to accept the teaching and learning committee report. All those in favor, or any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Budget insurance committee action items, gifts, grants, bequests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and bequests received in September of 2024.
Motion approved, second.
Motion second to approve the gifts, grants and requests from September 2024. Is there any further discussion?
If you turn with it.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying, I'm sorry, not none. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Discussion is preliminary twenty-four, twenty-five, our third Friday enrollment.
When, um, when's the next one?
January.
January.
You know what our number would have been had all the kids been in school?
You can call the kids even if they are not in school, if they attend one day before and one day after they accomplish.
Okay.
We have very few kids that are considered milkshells.
Well, and if they are, we, we've removed them off the record. I mean, right? So they would be off, yeah.
So the Friday count is.
And I don't know if this was asked last week, but in the numbers that we do have from the closing of the school of Lake Superior and the number of students that went to Great Lakes and/or, um, or corners, do we have those numbers? And did we lose any of those students?
We did. Do you know what that is off the top of your head?
Twelve students from Lake Superior.
Yeah. So it's kind of numbers that.
Yeah, we talked.
They're all mentioned that are going to Solon. You would hear, you'd have known that.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry. But that was kind of a break time.
David's got all of it. Not that one.
All right. Anything else from anybody on that? The next is the actual transfer of service equalization aid, equalized property valuation and levy information will be updated on October fifteenth, which is Wednesday, Tuesday, tomorrow, tomorrow already. All right. So they have the big report.
If I'm resigning, more of the wasp will want to get a better guess of our equalization aid. Um, it's pretty much what it was close to in life. It was the big unknown is what's happening. So let's see, that's the only, um, everything was printed in the paper though.
Friday the eleventh.
You staying up till midnight then?
No, they told me it's eleven, eleven, eleven a.m.
Oh, okay. Informational items, Director of Business Services David C. provided updates on the following items. Lake Superior Elementary building update. The budget hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, October thirtieth at 5:00 P.M. And our fund ten revenue and expenditure, expenditure preliminary reports were presented.
Motion to accept the budget and insurance committee report.
Second, motion is second to accept the budget insurance committee report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Personnel negotiations committee action items, administration recommends approval of the October 2020 to four new hires and separations report.
Motion approved, second.
Motion second to accept the new hires and separations report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There are no discussion items, no informational items.
Motion accept personnel negotiation for.
Motion second to accept personnel negotiations committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Legislative committee action items, none. Discussion items, none. Informational items. One hundred and thirty-seven school referendum questions will be on the November ballot. The November election is quickly approaching and the eyes of the nations are fixed on Wisconsin. While the presidential senate new state legislative districts continue to draw attention, when Wisconsin voters go to the polls, they will also find one hundred thirty-seven local school district referendums on the ballot in one hundred and twenty districts. And there is a full article on this on the legislative, legislative update on the WASB website.
Motion accept legislative.
Second.
Motion second to accept the legislative committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Other reports by members of the board.
I'm, uh, excited to attend the, one of the first career fairs at the high school, November seventh. It's architecture and construction, I think. Exciting.
Hmm, yes. I think it'd be neat to see what, what happens at the, uh, November fourteenth, the WI sportsmanship. Also when all the schools are in, in our building.
Did we just have the Hall of Fame?
Yes.
Weeks ago, two weekends ago.
Yeah, it was very, very, it was very well attended. Uh, I didn't miss the first part of it to the wedding, but, um, the recipients, uh, there was a, there, there was a full thing in the paper. Uh, I don't know how many programs are left somewhere, but, uh, it's, it's amazing the people that are coming in, the things that they've done. Um, we had some entertainment that night from, uh, Daniel Singer, just pretty neat and stuff. Uh, Daniel was, was very talented when he was in high school back in nineteen ninety-two, when he, when he graduated and it was just so neat to see what he did. And he wrote a song, Oh Superior. So he sang that right at the end. So it was really, really cool. It was a great evening. Uh, Ella, it, from what I heard, again, I, I missed the first part of it, but the compliments, the everything that I heard after that, you and your group did an amazing job. You've got some go-getters in your group. It's a small group. We got to figure out to get more people involved. But they were so appreciative of having the hors d'oeuvre night. They're so appreciative of the way that you conducted the program and everything. And, uh, it was the, the number of people that stayed afterwards was something else too. I mean, they stayed a half hour, forty minutes after the whole event and stuff in school, so.
I, there's heroes, people that worked, Kate Linnell, Elise Sterling, it's been, uh, put on, they came with an idea of how we can jazz it up, make it more affordable for people to come rather than having a big sit-down dinner. Um, our numbers are great. Um, there were, I don't want to use the word younger, um, but there were some.
Go ahead.
Closer to graduating people in. And so there was a lot of people who tried to do as many as they could, young adults, um, that fifty dollars for dinner and the program's kind of a lot. So, um, it's, it's definitely not a huge fundraiser, but it's, you know, it is a great time. So those people really helped a lot. Um, congrats to you again. I don't know how many bucks you get on the laws. Yeah, it, it was a, it was a great week overall. Just thanks to everybody for helping, homecoming, holidays. Big success.
Yep.
At seven o'clock, uh, boys varsity soccer has their last home game, um, as well.
They had a big weekend, didn't they, right?
Yeah, they did really well on both games.
Any other district program highlights?
Um, there is a lot. This is a very busy time of year. In addition to all the referendum work that we're doing, um, today is Indigenous Peoples' Day. We had some different events going on in our schools, some really cool events. I know you captured some of the festivities at the high school. That'll probably get out. So thank you for doing that. Obviously we had homecoming, tons of people at the homecoming football game, um, and the, and the parade was wonderful. We've got trunk retreats and fall festivals happening at all the elementaries. I'm doing trunk retreat this week. I'm not dressing up, but we'll figure that out later. No, I know.
I was sorry, I went to the game, but, um, what, any behavioral issues or improvements with the football game, especially having that many more people?
I will say Sam Berman, the assistant principal, is outstanding and helped to kind of oversee and supervise some of that. We're getting better every time. I mean, just going to be continuing to remind kids what, what we expect of them and we have a great staff who are helping. Would that sound right?
You, you've grown and educated a lot since August twenty-third. Yeah, I mean, I, it was one of the most attended games that I've been a part of in five years.
Yeah.
And it, and, and, I mean, I, we have a great group of kids and great, and it's, um, you know, people are here to support our kids. They're not here to just come around. So that's a big thing. We're here to watch, here to watch football. And, um, yeah, I'd like to, again, thank everybody for their help in supporting that, keeping what we want. Everybody of all age at the games, um, but we wanted their cheer team on and, and that happened last Friday.
Yeah.
We're looking forward to this Friday night. We can have the same problem.
Yep. A couple of other things, um, Wednesday, I believe it is the sixteenth, yeah, is, um, Unity Day. And so people are encouraged to wear orange to promote kindness and inclusion across all of our schools. We've got parent teacher conferences coming up in October. And, you know, one of the things, David, I think we probably should get on the, um, agenda, uh, for one of our future meetings is, um, bringing the Hope Squad in from the high school to get some updates. Cause I know that they've been doing a lot of work around suicide prevention at the high school. So I think we would, might be good to bring them out and, um, they were just at the school for us this week, so should probably bring them here.
Yeah, new video up online. So you should check that.
There's a lot going on.
Yeah, I saw it. It's very good. Yeah. All right. Consideration of bills and pre-approved bills.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second to consider, pay the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. It's time. Is there a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. And the second adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Good night and thank you.